Well, good morning. Today is the second day of December, the time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present, and Mr. Davidson is absent. Can we have you identify yourself for the start over here?
Brad Smith, Assessors' Office.
Chaplain Ironwood, Assessors' Office.
Paul Carney, Operations.
Curtis Lane, Human Resources.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Real ID guy.
I'm for board here at the Clerk's Office.
Bob Perkins, Ada County.
Beth Ma, Treasure.
Well, welcome. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
There are not.
Okay, well, the first item on the, on the agenda is some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
A second motion, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Today, under our business procurement has the award of bid two six zero zero seven, the Ada County Courthouse Exterior Handrail Replacement Project twenty twenty six. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project. We would like to submit this recommendation letter for consideration.
Did you read the letter?
Yeah, I did have to. It's a letter dated December second, two thousand twenty five, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two six zero zero seven. Dear Members of the Board, after reviewing the two bids submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to reject all the bids submitted for bid two six zero zero seven. The bids submitted either did not have a valid Idaho Public Works License or was in excess of the budget for this project. In accordance with Idaho Code sixty seven twenty eight oh five, subsection two, subsection A, Rowan Act eight, the Operations Department would like to request to procure this project more economically out on the open market to maintain costs within budget.
Okay, any questions?
So you, so you feel you can actually, in the open market, do that?
Yes, we did receive two bids. One was pretty close. The one that didn't have the public works license was pretty close to our budget, but they couldn't be considered because they didn't have a public works license. They're working on getting it. The other one was substantially over budget. And Bobby, have some more insight on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley. We, we do feel like we can hopefully get up to open market and find some pricing that is much more in line with what we need to get done out there. We were kind of surprised by the one that did come in over. As Bob mentioned, the first one was almost right in line with what we anticipated and what our previous policy came back at. So we do think on the open market, we can get it for less than what the highest bidder was on top of the original bids.
As I recall, there was wide diversity there anywhere between those bids. I mean, it wasn't, wasn't like they were closed. It was about a three hundred thousand dollar delta.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to reject all bids for bid two zero six zero zero seven, Ada County Courthouse Exterior Handrail Replacement Project twenty twenty six, and procure, I procure it on open, on the open market.
Okay, a second motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we're getting on to new business. We have a couple of resolutions to adopt. I'll, I'll open the public hearing on resolution number thirty one five zero. A resolution updating consolidating pre-approved lists for professional architectural engineering testing and land survey services. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
I don't need to ask questions, but it would be, how do we come up with this group list? Just, just for discussion for the public to understand.
Sure, Commissioners. So we actually sent out an official RFQ a while back to the procurement office and accepted basically proposals to see, you know, based on the RFQ. We went through and evaluated, evaluated, we evaluated the group of them and then selected kind of the top five in each category. We did have a couple at the time that were a little, little hesitant with some of the contract language. And so this, this one here is one of the, one of those architects. And so they've agreed to sign an agreement now and come onto our list. So, but there was a full process we did for architects, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, surveying, testing. So we did, we did quite a bit. There was a full RFQ process that was done. So maybe we evaluated thirty five, thirty six proposals for the different categories.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the public understood we didn't just arbitrarily select people. There was a process for getting there.
That's correct. There's a process. We set some criteria out for grading and then went through each and every proposal and had to evaluate them based off the grading criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussions on this resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty. And call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number three one five zero as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty one, resolution number six, providing for the sale of Ada County personal property by the Ada County Board of Commissioners. Decommissioned equipment is for computers for kids. Any question or discussion on resolution thirty one fifty one?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I've been speaking recently to the Interfaith Sanctuary that we toured recently. And they're actually working with procurement to take a look at our list of excess furniture and vehicles and electronics and whatnot that we tend to get rid of to see if there's anything that they might be interested in. So I'm wondering about maybe just pulling this for a week and allow Interfaith to take a look and see if any of the old phones or printers or anything like that might be of interest for their new facility.
Well, there's, there, there's that request. Is there any other discussion on this resolution?
Well, I guess these come up periodically. And I, I agree with Mr. Davidson that it's useful to have a broad spectrum. Does, does anybody here speak to the, what we actually did in this community? In the past, somebody has been here, and it was usually Steve, so he's not here, so.
Oh, these are decommissioned equipment to computers for kids. It's the IT department that does this.
And they do it periodically. And I guess that's my point. This, this one, I think, is pretty well in place. So I would agree with Mr. Davidson. In the future, plug that into as, as part of our, both the, this equipment as well as whether it's anything else we have, furniture or vehicles or whatever, into the Interfaith Sanctuary as part of that discussion. This one, I think, is, is pretty well there. So I think a week wouldn't allow this one to go forward. I think in the future.
Well, it's a good idea.
It's a good suggestion.
For future, for future reference, our procurement department, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we will be meeting with Interfaith Sanctuary on Thursday. We're going to have to go out to our Mooresville Warehouse, see what furniture might be, might work for them. And also maybe take a look at a vehicle that's coming up for surplus for them. And also we'll ask them at that time to, you know, I sent their, their executive director an email yesterday asking if they needed any electronic equipment. So it's kind of a work in progress right now in trying to determine what, all that they need for their facility.
Yeah.
So the question is, what, what we were just saying, do this one now, meet with them and in the future? Because there will be other things coming along with the electronics as well, as other things as well, correct?
That seems to be a pretty good flow of items coming through the IT department for computers, printers and such. So I'm sure Stephen and his group will have some other items that will be coming up for surplus.
So I, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to.
Let me close the public hearing and then you make a motion.
Well, well, it's for discussion before we.
Okay.
Before we close the public hearing. My preference would be to go forward with this with a, with the direction to staff that we would in fact include computer.
We'll include.
Everything.
Interfaith and anybody else. And this is a public process.
Right.
This is not something we're doing in secret. I mean, this is resolution's been published and, and, and we can make it, we can make these surplus properties available to anybody.
So anyway, that would, just for discussion purposes.
Okay.
And I don't know if Mr. Commissioners has any other comments, but.
No, that's fine. Well, I, I didn't know what, do we have a set schedule for electronics? Do they come a quarterly or do we get rid of it just as it accumulates?
It's pretty much that Stephen's group gets rid of it when it accumulates. But it seems to work out about once every three months or so that you have to go through the donation process for IT equipment.
Okay. Yeah, I was just thinking of since their opening is coming up soon, if they're going to be shopping. But I don't know if they're two months or three months. I've seen there are definitely a few months from when we took a tour.
Okay, so, and again, back for discussion. This, as the chairman said, is, all of these are public. So anybody can rail themselves on these things as we move through. So I, if you close the public hearing, I'm ready for a motion.
Well, I'll close already, the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty one. Public hearing being closed, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty one fifty one as listed on the agenda. And for the public as well as staff to be conscious of what we just discussed and make sure that this is, these kinds of things are available to the general public as well.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty two, a resolution adopting amendments, restated Ada County Deferred Conversation Plan and provide for an effective date for the amended and restated plan. Any questions or discussions on this? You want to give a little update on this?
Sir, I don't have much on this one.
Okay. Well, there are some changes in it for the deferred comp, comp plan. And I'm sure everybody's had a chance to take a look at it, the effects.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, this is, I think, an HR function, but they do review this, which is what we're doing here. They do this, review this on a regular basis so that we can in fact be up to date in terms of making it as robust for our employees as possible in this deferred conversation.
And there are changes to federal saylaws that affect this. All right, any other discussion on, on resolution number thirty one fifty two? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty two and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution three one five two as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Say aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving along, I'll open the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty three, a resolution for the convenience of motorola radios from the Ada County Sheriff's Office to the College of Western Idaho. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Nope, hearing none.
Just, just as a comment, this, this is the kind of thing we're talking about. And I think the sheriff's office does have a relationship with College of Western Idaho, knows that these, these things are useful in their educational components. So that's why this has already been discussed in terms of.
Right. And it's surplus radios that they're not using. Okay, any, any other comments or suggestions? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution thirty one fifty three. Call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution thirty one fifty two as listed on the agenda.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, we have Representative for Clerk's Office there. You want to give us an update?
Well, unfortunately, I broke my stamp walking into today's open business meeting. So I've asked Madam Clerk for additional time to attest our documents. But on a latter note, we've got three elections team members that are on the road. They're in Bonneville County today. They'll spend the night and head over to Bannet County. Both counties have a runoff for the recent election. And so they're there to simply observe and shadow and watch those processes. So we don't want to pretend we knew everything right. We want to make sure that there's nothing out there that we need to know for our processes. So we're supporting those three on the road. And then I wanted to share a pretty, pretty exciting conversation with Tim Sturgis, our Director of Finance and Budget this morning. He's been knee deep in the audit, as you know, for several, several weeks now. And today I saw a glimmer of light in his eye. They're going through financial statements and knock on wood, they could have us put to bed by the end of next week. So for his team and for his sanity, I'm hoping they can get there and have another smooth audit.
It'll be a qualified audit?
It'll be qualified. It certainly is. It's our external audit, I daily.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Do you know what went wrong in Elmore County with their election disparities?
I heard rumblings and I read the press release from Secretary of State. It seems like all ballots were scanned in fact, but perhaps there were some user errors. So I don't know what the issue was. I'm pretty surprised to see that our three hundred ballots were unaccounted for, which was ten percent of all of their ballots. But yet none of the races changed with the, with the, with the count, the hand counts. So that's, that's pretty phenomenal. So I'm sure they're, glad to have that behind them.
And there's a recall in Bannet County as well? Not a recall, but a runoff?
There's a runoff in Bannet and in Bingham.
And Bonneville.
Or Bonneville and Bingham, yeah, okay, well, yeah.
I knew there, it's a, it's a mayor and a city council in, in Bonneville, in Idaho Falls.
So where it goes.
Yeah, and it's, it's been quite the hot, hot contest as I understand it. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, question. So back to what you were saying before in terms of if I were going over to Eastern Idaho, our people are going over there. What did we learn from Elmore County that would be useful for us here in terms of ballot integrity and following all of that?
Chairman, Commissioner, good question.
I think every election we're still learning, but with our processes and SOPs, when we run a ballot through a machine, we know that we're counting it correctly. And ballot, or our ballot verifier, you know, it's the true transparent statement to that. So I don't know if we necessarily learned anything. It's just a pat on the back saying that we didn't have the same user error and certainly not something we want.
Be aware of that so that in training or whatever, that, please know, this happened other places, so don't let it happen here.
Good point. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us up to the catering permits, alcohol licenses. We have three catering permits. One new license and three license transfers. Any question or discussion on any of these catering permits? Now, follow. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the catering permits and licenses as listed on the agenda. How far is the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of?
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the claims journal, pair of bills for the week. Any question or discussion on the claims journal? I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the unauthorized payment of the claims journal dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second. You've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have personnel actions. Unconditional pay increase, lower and higher transfer positions, two job reclassifications, four salary adjustments. Any question or discussion on any of the personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Hello, Brad, we have an assessor's office here today.
Good morning. Good morning, how's the assessor's office? Pretty good. We're back as attending the IDCA Assessor's Conference, their fall conference. And then tomorrow should be ATI, which I imagine some of you may be there tomorrow too, right? So overall, you may notice that there's no tax cancellations this week. So we're pretty excited about that. It just means you'll have double next week. So, okay, we're in our final, final month of December. So we're not doing corations. So anyone that files, we have the full exemption as we near the, the final month. So up until December thirty first. And then other things of importance around our office, just like the Ada County survey. You guys just completed it. And I imagine you'll find this pretty fruitful. We're on our fourth annual assessor's office survey that will be kicking off today. And we always enjoy the comments in there. They're not always great, but the management team will read all the way through the survey. And that'll be open for a couple of weeks for our employees to give us feedback on that. So we'll be kicking that off today. Other than that, not, not a whole lot going on.
Okay. Go ahead. You need a, you need a motion on this?
Exemption.
Property tax exemption?
That, I'm not, I know that's. Yeah, so that one, looks like they met qualification. I mean, that for the sixty three, six oh two B, but it fell through the cracks somewhere. But they did meet qualifications, so it is recommended for approval.
Okay. Any questions or discussions from the board?
Just, just to make sure that, this is an example of how well our, the assessor's office works with taxpayers, I think, in making sure that these kinds of things. If there is an error or something, we, we find it and we correct it. And that's what's happened here, correct? It was just something that, a routine kind of review and.
Yeah, it, it wasn't our office specifically, but yes. I mean, we all worked together to make things correct. So, yeah, the exemption came in, was lost. I believe, I don't have the exact details, I believe in a fax or something. And it was found just recently, so. But we all work on this to make it correct, so.
Okay.
I, I guess just renew that our public should have a confidence in the fact that we have good staff that are doing their jobs. And when, when things like this happen, we find, we find them and deal with them and move on. So that's what this is all about.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the property tax exemption as listed on the agenda. Do I need to list the?
Parcel number?
Parcel numbers. For parcel numbers, R seven, 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 eight, zero, seven, one, two, six, and R seven, 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 eight, zero, seven, one, four, five, sixty three dash six oh two B, River Valley Ministries Incorporated, as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So you, they should use seven in their lottery.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we do have our distinguished treasurer with us on this month.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Treasurer's Office right now is focused on property tax collections. The two thousand twenty five tax bills have been mailed. And yesterday, our office had a record. We're pretty excited. We received ten bins of mail, which is pretty fun for office, so.
Ten bins.
Ten bins of mail.
Keeps the jogger busy.
It keeps the jogger very busy. So we're still processing those payments. Just a reminder to the public that we are open for in-person payments at our public administration facility that is open right now. That's on Cloverdale. So that's a very popular location for walk-in, in-person payments. So we encourage people to go out there. And that'll be our priority until the due date on December twenty second this year, because the twentieth falls on a weekend. So taxes will be due on the twenty second. So that's our priority right now. We're at a roughly twelve percent collected. That amount might sound low. Our, right now, the, the nature of the collections is high volume, like, like a single check and, and lower payments. So checks for single parcels. And as we approach the due date, that's when we'll get like a single transaction, a large multimillion dollar wire. So it changes.
From a tax servicing company.
Correct.
The, the, handle it for the mortgage companies.
Right.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have Development Services on a project.
Mr. Chairman, just up to that. Thank Beth for the, for the Cloverdale office. I, I live out in that area and people thank me all the time for having that office here. So you, you do a good job there and they, they appreciate not having to come all the way down here, but they'd want to play you in person.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you. Okay, we have Development Services, a project two zero one nine, zero, zero, one, 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 S joint cemetery. Final plat for a cemetery, for a cemetery consisting of five hundred and eighty lots in the form of traditional burials, infant burials, garden niches, columbrium niches and common lots. The property consists of one acre and is located at seven eighty West McMillan Road. Okay? They don't sell these lots, do they?
Mr. Chairman, I believe they do sell the lots, yeah. As part of the traditional burial, you can purchase the lots, yeah.
They don't have a separate parcel number then, will they? They won't have a separate parcel number, will they?
I believe they will, Mr. Chairman.
Really? This is, because most, most cemeteries, they don't sell lots. They sell the right to be buried at that lot.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it just may be my complete, my layer of ignorance.
Because that would be a lot of extra work for our, our treasurer and our assessor to do.
Okay. Long time we got somebody to do that.
So they don't actually sell lots, they sell the right to be buried.
Yeah. The state code requires them to plot the lots.
All right, all right, well, good enough. Any questions or issues on this plat? Plat, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, final plat, like, like you typically see with, with five hundred and eighty lots? And the applicant has complied with all the requirements and we recommend you authorize the chair to sign and stamp this plat.
Okay, any questions or discussions on this cemetery? This is a first. I don't think we've done a cemetery plat before, have we?
We have, Mr. Chairman.
I think this one.
Yeah, this one is probably, I think, is your first. Yeah, occasionally with the population booming, we see a need to expand.
Oh, yeah. And, all right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the final plat for project number two zero one nine, zero, zero, one, one, one dash S, joint Fairview Cemetery, as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion.
And, and, and authorized the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board in stand.
Sign and stamp, right?
Okay. Okay, we got the motion clarified. All right.
Does the clerk have the motion clarified?
All right, she does. All right, well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now we have one agreement, an interim agreement with Expo Idaho, Idaho Gem Club, Gem Mineral Show. Any questions on the one agreement for Expo? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Expo agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have fourteen agreements up. Some of these are new agreements, some of them are carryovers. Any questions or discussion on any of the agreements, all the fourteen agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last, but not least, is our indigent services, the weekly indigent items. I will accept a motion on the weekly indigent items.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated December second, twenty-twenty-five and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you for the motion. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries, any other business needs to be brought before the board? You're not, we're adjourned. Okay, well, good morning. Today is the second day of December. The Ada County Board of Commissioners is in session acting as the Board of the Ada County Emergency Medical Services District, all three commissioners present. We also have with us for the meeting, go ahead, identify yourself.
Matthew Klein, Ada County Prosecutor.
Nicole Saltberg, Prosecutor's Office.
Actually, we're Prosecutor's Office. Real IT guy. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay, we have claims journal up, I'll accept the motion on claims journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal dated November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. We have personnel actions, one higher transfer position, one job reclassification. Any questions or issues on the personnel actions? I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the EMS personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Now I have AMS update, we asked Mr. Davidson if he could give us an AMS update.
Looks like we actually got John on the bridge.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, there's John, he's on the bridge. All right, John, give us an AMS update. I didn't see you on the bridge.
Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners. My apologies for not being there, I spent the Thanksgiving weekend sick and am continuing to convalesce. The only update that I have for you is that we sent a contingent to Salt Lake to our ambulance supplier to bring back four ARPA ambulances and somewhere around Leighton, one of those brand-new ambulances was sideswiped by a tractor trailer with minimal damage, fortunately, minimal damage. The person driving did an exceptional bit of evasive driving and emergency braking and so the vehicle is still drivable and what could have been a truly catastrophic accident turned out to be superficial damage. So they are back in town, the vehicles are tucked away safely, no injuries and we have, we're now heavy for ARPA ambulances. That's the end of my update.
Okay. Well, my dad, John, the Commissioners were participants in the holiday parade on Saturday and there was one of your brand-new painted ambulances in the parade, plus a couple of other vehicles. So the Ada County EMS was well-represented at the annual holiday parade.
Yes, sir, I saw the pictures, they, it looks like they did a fantastic job.
Yep, I think they did. All right, any questions or anything for John?
The dancers around the gurney did a great job too.
Yeah, they had Santa on the gurney or something like that. I'm assuming the one that got sideswiped wasn't one of the yellow ones.
Was it what?
It wasn't yellow.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was one of the, brand-new, it was a Type One with a new paint.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
John, did the, so the damages are going to be paid for by whom?
I'm not sure yet what the outcome is going to be of that. The other driver initially did not stop and then there was contact with the company and it sounds like Utah State Patrol got that driver stopped something like fifty miles later. And I do not know yet the outcome of that interaction yet because we have not received a final report.
And there weren't extensive repairs, right?
Pardon me?
There were not, there was not need of extensive repairs, it was drivable and?
That is corrected, right now it is superficial front bumper damage. So the description of the interaction certainly could have been far worse, but the vehicle is serviceable, it's drivable and so we're talking about a pretty superficial repair.
Well, John, you know there's been some rash of accidents by commercial drivers that didn't speak English well and were not properly trained. Did you know if this driver and this vehicle was one of those?
I do not, Mr. Care.
I guess Highway Patrol will let you know on that one. All right. All right, thanks, John.
You're welcome.
All right, any other action needs to be brought before the board? You're not, we're adjourned.